All right, good start. Welcome to the May Work Session. First thing on the agenda is comments from our student representative, who is in the middle of AP tests and will probably leave early so he can go study, correct?
Correct. It's one of the more stressful times of the year and was one of the more exciting ones. So we have AP tests starting last week and finishing up this week. And then for seniors, we have our senior dinner on Wednesday, our senior awards ceremony on Thursday, and then our senior prom on Friday. So we have a very exciting week. In addition, a couple of weeks ago, we had the junior prom. And based off what I heard, everyone had a fantastic time. For anyone that's really curious, the seniors have 13 days left of actual school. And then, not that I'm counting, but 13 actual days of school left. And then just recently, we elected the new class officers for the class of 2019, 20 and 21, and then we also have the new student body officers. So soon, we'll get a new whole round of cycle, a new cycle going on, and they, everyone know, I know everyone's really excited for it. Just some, a couple of things that were going around high school is on May 1st was College Decision Day. But so all the seniors celebrated by wearing all their college shirts. And some teachers also celebrated by showing their pride as well. But besides that, everyone's really excited for this time of the year.
And real quick, what shirt did you have on?
A Virginia Tech shirt.
Yes.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Good luck on your test tomorrow. All right, next thing up is the IU report.
Okay. CCIU met, I was in attendance. Two budgets were passed. We are working on the Marketplace budget. The Marketplace is comprised of services and programs that are needed throughout Chester County, as well as some additional counties. The CCIU does solicit a list of what needs each district in our county will have over the next calendar year or the next school year. And they put together offerings based on the needs of those school districts. So when you get to the Marketplace menu, as they call it, that's what the menu is comprised of. There are many, many needs throughout this county that, with other school districts, that Great Valley does not need, which is wonderful for us. We have to be grateful for that. However, the way the intermediate unit works is they are the intermediate unit for the entire county. So when the budget is paid for each year, it is paid for within a formula comprised of all the districts. So even though there are a lot of services that they're providing that Great Valley may not be utilizing, there is a serious need for all those services, or they wouldn't be offered. We are working on that budget. That budget will be voted on by all the districts in the county in June. But we are still working on refining it.
Can you remind us, Ellen, do we pay per services used? Or does all districts pay a proportional share of the budget?
In the Marketplace, and that's a great question, and I'm glad you're asking it, because these are the things we really do need to understand. The Marketplace menu budget is on an as-needed basis. If you, if a district in the lower end of the county needs a specific program, they will pay the cost of that program. So that's, that's the difference there. We, we do purchase from that menu. We are always, as are many other school districts, we're working with the IU and the business manager on an ongoing basis as to how things may be consolidated. We've got great, talented business managers across this county who are always working with Joe Lubitzky there on ways that things might be refined. It truly has been an incredible learning opportunity for me, because I've been sitting here for a long time in this room, and I really did not understand a lot of what goes into it. I know we are all budgeting the same way, but it's important to understand that even though we're budgeting the same way as the districts, the IU is a much different undertaking. Couple other things. Right now, we are negotiating two major administrative contracts are up this year on the IU. So that's a big undertaking. As well as something really exciting is that the IU now will have programs available for adults who are older than 21, who qualify for social services on the county level. But there's no place to deliver those services. The IU, which to me is magnificent, because I do believe that mental health is, is a real problem in our county across the state. So the IU will now put together programs to deliver those services. It will be a zero-budget line, because the county will pay the IU to deliver the services that these kids that are over 21. Under 21, if they get services, the districts have to educate. Over 21, the county provides services. There's just no providers, not many. The CCIU will be doing that now. It's a phenomenal thing to be able to offer Chester County. So a lot of these children that came up through all of our districts now that, you know, when, when we're finished with them, really don't go on, well, now they will have someplace to go on. And they will receive those services. And that, that is definitely a wonderful thing. So lots of work is being done there. We are continuing on the budget, just like we are in the districts. And if anybody has any questions, especially about the Marketplace...
I'd like to keep in mind, too, the Marketplace is all kinds of different programs. It could be an autistic program, all the way to superintendent search, or principal search, or any, I mean, it's a huge à la carte list, for lack of a better term. So they provide a lot of services to, throughout the county and the state, I guess, because they do provide that to others and make a lot of money, or I shouldn't say, charge appropriately to different districts, so.
Well, the good part about that is what, what is available to the Chester County school districts, largely for superintendent searches and the like, we are not paying for as school districts. However, those same services, the CCIU is selling outside of Chester County, and that's a profit line for them. And they do a phenomenal job. So it definitely is very valuable for that to continue. That lowers all of our budget costs.
Yeah, and that's just an example that was fresh, from recent past, the different services they do provide. So, all right, thank you. All right, program update, or program?
Yes, as we've discussed before, the Great Valley Teacher Leadership Academy is coming upon the conclusion of its first half-year. We started, applications went out in the fall. The first meeting was held in January. And this year, in the Teacher Leadership Academy, we have 28 of our professional, of our teacher leaders and additional administrators. The first year, we partnered with the Franklin Institute, and much of the focus was on learning in the brain and how to utilize brain-based strategies. There, there will be additional information about the Teacher Leadership Academy, but I wanted to give you the awareness that when we're talking about the partnership with the Franklin Institute, it is connected with the Teacher Leadership Academy. So that when you see that, that's not an ancillary partnership. That is part of the Great Valley Teacher Leadership Academy. A lot of great work has been happening. We have really 28 incredibly talented and motivated teachers as a part of that group. So more to come on that. The next item, 3.02, is our Special Education Plan Revised. And if you remember, in March, Joanna Wexler presented the plan, and that plan was out for review for 28 days. The end of the 28 days, it was voted on by the board, and it was submitted to PDE. PDE reviewed that, sent it back with edits to transition activities. So this is the same plan with the PDE edits that will now be for voting next week for the board. And that plan will be, then be accepted by PDE. For PSBA, we'll have the voting delegates, and that will be, that will be required to be voted upon and really in action at the PSBA conference that is held in October. So the actual action item will take place October 19th, which is at the conclusion of the PSBA conference. And that is held in Hershey every year.
And Regina, we need one delegate?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to be reaching out to my colleagues to see who might like to join me and do that job.
All right. The monthly enrollment reports are there for review. Next up will be policy. I'll turn this over to Stephanie.
There we go. Sorry, out of practice. Okay. So the Policy Committee met on May 8th, 2018. The Board Committee was myself, Jennifer Armstrong, and Samantha Jun. Admin was also there, as well as support staff. We called the meeting to order at 7:30 a.m. Policy 232 is Participation in School Affairs. This policy was reviewed previously and listed on the June 2017 Business Meeting Agenda for Second Reading and Adoption. The incorrect policy was uploaded at that time. This is now being brought back for second reading and adoption. We made no changes. Policy 526, and it was listed as Complaint Policy Grievance Procedure and Administrative Guidelines for Classified Staff. So I'm gonna have notes here and here. Policies 326 and 426 relate to the complaint process for administrative and professional staff and were reviewed previously. Policy 526 is new for teachers, I thought it was 426, I can check on that, due to the grievance procedure outlined in the collective bargaining agreement. The text in the administrative guidelines referring to a 10-day requirement will be revised to read 10 calendar days, and that's in line with all the other timeframes that we have in the policies. We did go back to the lawyer and ask about the titles, because some places it was listed as complaint, some grievance, and grievance is a specific thing under the collective bargaining agreement. So these are now titled Complaint Policies, and they don't reference grievances. Policy 426 specifically addresses any complaints that are not subject to the grievance process spelled out in the CBA or the collective bargaining agreement. So that's that. Policies 334, 434, and 534, sick leave for administrative, professional, and classified staff. No changes are suggested for these policies regarding sick time off. The procedures are clearly expressed in the handbooks, the collective bargaining agreement, and Act 93. Policies 335, 435, and 535, family and medical leaves and administrative guidelines for administrative, professional, and classified staff. This policy was thoroughly vetted by the attorneys and aligns to federal law. We are going to recommend pulling policies from the first reading to have more time to review. Policies 348, 448, and 558, we, sorry, 548, not 558. So 348, 448, and 548. I always stump the lawyers with some of our questions, and they need more time. So there will be, this will come back later. Okay. Policies 351, 451, and 551. These policies address drug-free workplace for administrative, professional, and classified staff. We discussed the definition of "at work" and felt that the wording might need revision. So we went back to the attorney, and the lawyer revised the definition of "at work" to, "An employee shall be deemed to be at work any time that the employee is acting pursuant to his or her official district-related duties, regardless of whether he or she is physically on or off district property." We also discussed, but haven't come to resolution, on trying to, to distinguish between drugs that are prescribed by a doctor versus drugs that aren't. And so one of the committee members asked, hey, can we or should we add the phrase, "unless prescribed by a doctor," to these policies? And my suggestion, and this is where I would like feedback from everybody here, I'm gonna bring up the policy and read, I'm just gonna bring up 451. And I'll, I'll read the purpose, which is two sentences. But right now, it reads as, "The Board recognizes that the misuse of drugs, which includes alcohol, is a serious problem with legal, physical, and social implications for the whole school community. As such, the Board is very much concerned about the problem that may be caused by drug use, which includes the misuse of alcohol by employees, especially as the use relates to the safety, efficacy, and productivity of employees." I would propose changing the phrase to, "As such, the Board is very much concerned about the problem that may be caused by drug use, which includes the misuse of alcohol and prescription drugs by employees, especially as it relates to the, especially as the use relates to the safety, efficacy, and productivity." So if we add in the misuse of prescription drugs, I think that would cover it. But if anybody doesn't like this, or would like it to be somehow otherphrased, welcome to suggestions, so.
Sounds adequate to me.
Okay.
Me, too.
And these, these are living documents. This is a snapshot in time. If we find that, hey, you know, we could do better, we can always bring it back sooner and revise them. So Chuck, if you could make sure that that change would get communicated before we upload them, it's in the second sentence. And I'm happy to meet you after to give you the phrasing.
Steph, just to ask, so then it covers misuse of, it covers alcohol, misuse of prescription drugs, and just also non-illegal drugs, also?
That's covered, yes, that's drug use in general.
Okay.
Yeah, and this would, this would also refer to the, the partner policies. So this is, for example, 451, but I'd like to see it adjusted in 351 and 551 as well. So, last but not least, let me get back to the thing. We adjourned at 8:30, and we, the Policy Committee decided to cancel our next meeting on May 29th, as we are on schedule, and that meeting is not needed. So we'll take up again in the fall. One thing that, in my free time, I like to look at policies from other schools. And one that I think that I would like the Board to just be aware of or consider, and I will get you guys information on email, is Unionville Chad's Ford looked at their suspension policy. And I think it would be great if, if we could look at ours and just maybe, what I'll do is email out what their current policy is, if I can ever get a hold of it. They've locked them down pretty good. And, and what ours is, and just as a discussion, if, if we wanted to, to look at that for, for something in the future, so.
Can I ask, why, why do you feel the necessity to look at that now? I mean, I guess, we, yeah.
Any, any time that I see a newspaper article about school board policies that say, "This is the first district in the state to do something," I think, hey, you know, if it hasn't been done before, it's something we might want to consider. And usually, we're on the cutting edge, so usually, we're the first to be doing things, or close to the first. And this is one where we, where another school is considering it ahead of us. So it's just something to be aware of.
But that policy basically gives a student the right to behave for a certain period of time, and then have a suspension removed from their record, correct?
I would have to get you the actual policy. All I've read is the newspaper article so far.
Yeah, I believe that's what it's doing. And my concern, I mean, we can look at it and discuss it, but the concern I have is, the Common App question is, "Have you been suspended, ever been suspended?" How do you recommend that a student fill that out if it's removed from their record?
So that was one of the things that the newspaper article, I'm, I'm not saying we should do it or not do it. I'm just saying that this is something that we, as a board, should understand that other school districts will be looking at this as well, especially in our county. And so we can look at it, we can do nothing, and that's, that's fine. But I'm just making you aware that this is in the news and has been for a little bit.
Could I, I'd like to see it discussed, too. Not that we would adopt it or not, I don't know. But besides other school districts, I'm sure that many members of our community have seen these articles, and if we have a similar issue come up, they might point to what Unionville has done. So we should at least have a discussion and come up with a unified position on it.
Could I maybe offer something middle-of-the-road? I'm, could, could, maybe we have an understanding?
All I'm doing, Ellen, is I'm saying, I'm gonna email a newspaper article. That's it.
And listen, I'm not putting you on the policy agenda.
I'm literally saying, I'm emailing you a newspaper article. I'm gonna try to track down the policy. That's it.
No, but what I, I think would be more valuable than that is if you might be able to come back to us with actually what the issue is, what this overall overarching issue is that's causing them to look at their policy. I think that would be valuable, and that's where we should start the discussion. And then, if the Policy Committee wants to take on our policy, I have no problem. But I'm a little cloudy as to what is the real issue that's causing the impetus. So Ellen, we get that. I think, I was gonna say.
I'll get it to you in a nutshell. I mean, first off, let's back up a minute. I would recommend that, Steph, that you and the Policy Committee, if you want to look at that, look at it, and then if you think there's a recommendation to bring forward, let's do it that way. But back to your question, I forget the exact number. Roughly 20 students were caught at a football game drinking? At Unionville Chad's Ford? Okay, yes, sorry. Unionville Chad's Ford students were caught drinking at Unionville Chad's Ford football game. To make sure we're clear.
Not a great one.
They all got suspended, and parents got upset because it was gonna impact their future college potential. And as a result, the school board has, down there, reevaluated this and created this policy that says that after so many months of clean living, you can apply to have that suspension removed from your record. Your school record is what they've done. That's it in a nutshell. I mean, you can get the details and look at it and make a recommendation if you think we should consider it. I would put that on the Policy Committee to look at.
I mean, I actually would feel better if the whole Board directed the Policy Committee whether or not to go forward, because I have no skin in this game. Like, I just, I just feel like, hey, this is something that, you know, at least one other highly achieving school is, is dealing with, and I just want to make sure we're aware of it. So I'll send out the article if anybody has any thoughts. And if not, we can pick it up next year, when the Policy Committee starts up again. Just, yeah.
All right. All right. Is that everything for policy? All right, under Facilities is the Building Use Report for Review. Nothing under Transportation or Food. Moving on to Finance.
All right, just to start this section off, the Board Finance Committee met last Monday, May 7th, for our final meeting of the 2017-2018 year. Dr. Speaker Paul Binsky and Mr. Linderman gave us updates on our budget as pending. As we're discussing it, as you know, the Board spent most of the time reviewing the facilities plan and its impact on a general fund budget. Tonight, I believe, we'll be going over the budget again to talk about some additional details. In particular, some of the details surrounding the long-range plans for the facilities budget. For the purposes of the Finance Committee, our next meeting will be at some point in this fall, at a date and time to be determined. Thank you.
All right. Go into the Budget Update, Chuck, 802.
I'm having some issues with my Board docs.
You and me both.
So, and...
So we feel you on that, with that one, Chuck.
Well, this, this, yeah, so I...
It's been constant.
Okay, the Budget Update, and this is basically a review of what we did last week at the Facilities Committee with a little bit of capital in the second half of this. Changes we've made since April 16th, we've reduced the Special Education budget by $300,000 as a result of that RFP that the Board awarded last, last month, that we have some contracts that are still being negotiated with the, the attorneys on for approval. We hope to have them done for next week. We have the latest revision of them on there now, and hopefully, the attorneys will have them finished for, for Monday night. We also reduced the, the Benefits Section by $400,000, $250,000 in prescription, and $150,000 in workers' comp as a result of some new numbers in both of those categories. The variables we have, not, not rocket science, we've been talking about these. I won't go over them in, in detail. Major increases, these have been adjusted to reflect the reductions on the previous couple slides ago. So our budget is now at $105 million. And as you can see, about 68% of it is, is for staffing, about 5% for debt, about 27% for our budget for other costs. And, and as you go down, you know, about 8% for support of other schools, such as the intermediate units, such as the approved private schools, such as private residential rehab, such as charter schools, such as vocational technical school. So to further drill that down a little bit more, the transportation's about 4.6%, or just under $5 million of it, of which, about half of that goes for, a little more than half, just a tad higher than half goes for our transporting our 4,200 students to our six schools, and the other, a little less than half, but not much less than half, goes to transporting about 1,000 kids to 100 different private profial schools. Then you have infrastructure cost. The, that's $8.1 million. That's up a little bit this year, as we've put the one-to-one technology cost into the, the Technology General Fund budget. And then the operating cost, $7.3 million. That is up by $3.4 million, as the, the, the part of the transfer is going to the Capital Reserve Fund to, to fund the ongoing costs that we'll talk about in, in a little bit. Revenues, as you can see, predominantly, most of our revenues come from local sources. And of that state revenue, over half of that is for pension reimbursement, as our pension budget is, is, is about $14 million. So about half of that has come in. Our federal programs are, are very small, about $700,000, leaving us a budget gap of about $4.9 million, with the use of reserves of about $3 million. We'll talk about that in a second. It's about a $1.9 million budget gap. The reserves are here. This is, with a different color coordination this year. We were a little tired of our same-old thing, so we went to a new, we went to our spring colors.
Rename your spring colors at the top. We don't have blue anymore.
I know, I don't have blue. It's red and, it's red and committed. Orange is committed. So this, this just shows that the, what we've used, our, our fund balance reserve, or what our general fund reserves have been over the past few years. You can see they've been decreasing since 2014. And you can see that in the bottom box there is, we have committed what, or committed or assigned, and, and of that, $6.3 million of that is for other post-employment benefits. I went into a little detail on that last week. It's, it's meant for anything, anyone in any contractual agreement with the school district, whether it be a teacher, or, or an administrator, or anybody that, that qualifies for anything under there has to be recorded. That's, that's... that's, that's a Governmental Accounting Standards Board requirement. DEV is Deveraux, that's the, the amount of money that we could be on the hook for if we don't keep chasing Philadelphia for their money, and $3 million is for the, is committed to the balancing of the subsequent year's budget, which is 1819.
Chuck, can you remind me of the timeline on Deveraux? I feel like I've been hearing this for years.
You have.
Okay, just to make sure.
It's been a long time, and it's probably gonna never go away, so. It's got down to a more, more reasonable number, it used to be quite higher. Here's the plan.
Real quick, and I think for clarity, right, the reason it's never gonna go away is because of the fact that we're obligated to educate students at the Deveraux facility in Willistown, right, to make sure they're educated, I should say, or, the right term is, make sure they're getting the proper education and paying for it. If other districts don't, we can get reimbursed, except for the city of Philadelphia, and that's where this money being set aside comes into play.
Right, and it's, it's, it's all about identifying students for special education needs, students from Philadelphia in the past coming at, at a seventh to ninth grade level that haven't been identified under what you call child fine, that should have been identified, so Deveraux would put them immediately into a special education setting, start to Bill Philly, Philly would say, hey, wait, they weren't identified, you know, you shouldn't have identified and went out our permission, and then thus the, the, the cycle starts. And as, as Dave says, the, every other school district in the Commonwealth, if they don't pay for the tuition, there's a provision in the school code for intercepting their school subsidy from the state to pay for this kind of stuff, except for Philadelphia, they are exempt from the, the state intercept provision. So this is the plan here for the next couple of years for use of reserves, assuming we have, have enough to do that. This year, we reduced it down to $3 million, and then for here on out, since it's the end of the pension reserve, it'll be, we're projecting about $2 million a year. The additional revenue, $1.9 million, would come from a, a proposed Act One tax increase This is our staffing projection, I don't know how much detail we need to go into more on this, if you want us to, we can, Dr. Speaker Paul Binskey's gone into it a couple times.
Nothing has changed in this.
These are our class-sized guidelines, they are just guidelines, so it does not mean that if, if there's a 27th student in a fourth or fifth grade class, that it will automatically be added. This is what our millage looks like before and after the proposed Act One index, proposed increase. Now, here's the, the five-year plan with an adj, it's, it's pretty similar, maybe a little, some, some minor adjustments to it, so the numbers are, are pretty close to last week, but it shows, this is if you did nothing, you could run your reserves down, and we would be out of reserves in 2021. And you can see the, the negative gets bigger years on out. And this, this assumes no tax increase, and all figures are approximate, if anybody can tell me exactly what the healthcare rates are gonna be in 2020, 21, you know, you're, probably should be not sitting here and be somewhere else. Or if you could tell me what the revenues are gonna do, that, you know, the revenues are gonna continue to escalate in, in transfer taxes and things like that, or, or will we have a year like when, when, what happened in 2008 and 2009, where all of a sudden, we go from a lot to nothing in, in some of those categories? This is a five-year, this is what, just kind of for math, for purely math circumstances, if you had an Act One Index Increase every year, this is what happens to the reserves, you can see they actually start to grow in the out-years, and you can see you actually would not even need the, the tax increase in the, in the 21, 22, or 22, 23, the full increase if, if you stayed at this level, assuming all the assumptions, and this has some built-in assumptions for total benefits increases, not including PISers, PISers, we have an actual number in there for that, includes about a 2% payroll increase, so that's payroll, that's not salary increase, that's a payroll increase, so that would include any additions to, to staff. This is the calendar, same thing you saw last, last week, you are through this, the final budget has been available for inspection, will continue to be, we'll put a revised version of it up, you know, as soon as we, we get the proofing 100% done here, you have a copy in your Board Docs. So, wanted to talk a little bit about our capital budget now, and just wanna, without boring you, but, but wanting to kind of drill home some of the things here, we want to go through some of the things with the capital budget. So, essentially, there's two budgets, there's an operating budget, there's a capital budget, and I, I won't read these things, but the capital budget is a plan for things that are gonna be consumed this year, and a capital budget are for specific things that have a life expectancy. So, you know, you put a lot of things in there, and there's a threshold for capital budgets, and there's some examples of what, what are in capital budgets, and what are in operating budgets. So, most of the things that you see in a capital budget, you'll see in our capital budget when we get to it. You know, and you have to integrate these capital budgets and operating budgets together, because every, as, as it's, as it's said for years, every time we talk at any meeting, at, I don't care what you're talking about, it involves money or buildings, somebody's, you know, either spending money, or somebody's using a building, which creates wear and tear and things like that, so, so it's, you know, when some, when someone says, I want to develop this XYZ program, well, is there gonna be capital needed, is there gonna be special furniture needed, is there gonna be special, anything special like that needed, and, and how do we develop that? Capital needs are impacted by time, of course, enrollment, our, our alignment or construction of our buildings, technology, again, and decisions that, that you make educationally, as well as state and federal requirements. So, when you assess the capital budgeting process, you gotta figure out what your priorities are, and then kind of go outwards from that, you know, what do we have, what do we need, you know, how does, how does the item fit within the capital plan, and how can it be And then, how we fund this, and this, you know, a lot of these things, I will tell you, came right from a presentation that was put on by, by the Commonwealth about 18 months ago, they hired a firm to do this, and I shared with Superintendent about 18 months ago, saying, at some point, we'd probably ought to do this, because it's exactly what we do, is what they were proposing we should do, and really, all we have to do is drop in our numbers, so. And there's a lot of other schools that do it this way, too, there's just some that don't. So, you gotta, you gotta do the operating expenses, operating expenses have to be funded year to year, we know that, with current year revenue or some use of reserves, and so we do a little bit of both. Capital projects, you can use current year, you can do, pay-as-you-go, you can do long-term debt, you can do performance contracts, you can do grants, and you can use capital reserves. So, we're right now using a little bit of a few of these, we're about to go into a pay-as-you-go mode, we have used long-term debt, 2014, you borrowed $10 million to, to kind of get, get that going, we've got a performance contract in place that puts about $400,000 into there a year, and we've been using the reserves out of it. In the, in the distant past, we've had some grants, we had grants to put the solar panels on the roof at the, at the middle school, and, and things like that, that has not been a really big source that we've, we've been able to, to tap into, and some of the borrowing that you may, may see through the state, or, or some federal, or, or, at, at some of the national conferences and all, we don't really qualify for, because they're really meant for the more socio-economically deprived schools. And we got that one borrowing that was an interest-free, actually, actually, we were making a little money on it, I would say our interest rate is probably about negative 1% right now.
That's the Q set, right?
Yeah, and technically, we probably shouldn't have got that, you know, we, when we applied for it, our score out of, out of 100 was in a neighborhood of 40, because to get a higher score, you had to be economically disadvantaged, and we weren't, so all of our scores were, were reduced. But fortunately, the Acting Secretary of Education at the time was able to allocate money to anyone for under $1 million he wanted, and since he was graduate of Great Valley, we got $999,000. And then, because they didn't spend all the money, the next year, we got another $300,000-some thousand, so it, it helped in the, in the, in the capital plan. This is our, our summary of our, our current long-range plan, kind of real high level of it, it shows, you know, what our actual was last year, what our estimated is this year, and going forward. Now, you can see in the, in line number two, we've been funding that mainly with the, the use of the Little Budget Reserve, 1617, we actually had the, the Performance Grant, the Budget Reserve, and we got a, an insurance reimbursement for the, one of, one of the disasters we had, I think it was the...
Charlestown.
Charlestown Jim Disaster Jim, not J-I-M, not J-Y-M, so, so that's why you see that one's a little bit of an odd number that year. But then you see, starting in 1819, we have budgeted the general fund transfer of the $400,000 from the Performance, uh, Performance Contract, and the $3.4 million of the debt, which was going to pay for facilities when it was being, when it was debt, you know, debt doesn't pay, debt isn't some magical thing, it was paying for facilities that the boards in the past built. So you see that going all the way out, 3.8 million, and you can see that next year, we have a, under number five there, our maintenance, I'm gonna get into this in a second, our maintenance budget is 3.9 million, it's actually the lowest projected budget of the next five years, they continue to go up a little bit every year, and we'll talk about some of the big items that are out there, we're gonna talk about every item that's out there for next year, because quite frankly, there's not very many, because one big one, and there's a bunch of medium-sized ones, and then in the out-years, we'll talk about the, the total budget, you also have a copy of the budget in the, or, the detailed budget in there for you. You can see, we used to fund the technology, we moved that to the general fund with an $800,000, so that was worth a 4.2 million, the actual change in the, in the debt service. And we used to do activities, we were, we were funding some of the activities, they were, they were doing their uniform replacement out of there, that has been, that was put back in 2016, 17 to the general fund.
Are there, are there any other categories that are being considered for moving back to the general fund, just out of curiosity? Okay.
There's only maintenance left.
No, there's nothing.
There's nothing left but maintenance. I mean, you can move maintenance back.
I'm gonna suggest that we hold off that question until we get to that point.
So here's the history of, of the, the ending fund balance, and the projected ending fund balance from that last chart of the, of the reserves, Capital Reserve Fund, you can see that one year where the board, we were actually looking at refinancing a bond issue, and the board made a decision to, to look at what it would cost just to keep the debt the same, and how much we could borrow, rather than, so that's, that's what happened, and that's really why you were in a situation now and not a couple of years ago, so.
And I, I wanna just kind of remind people that at the time that we did the refinancing, and we put the money into capital, we did that knowing that we could stave it off because of the reduction in debt service in outlying years. So, I remember, we had those discussions at that time about why we only did what we did at that time, and that was because the refinancing kept us budget-neutral and bought us time.
So, this next slide is actually a little more detailed version of that five-year projection that I had shared with you a few slides ago, when the budget, and we called this out just to show you, there's two highlighted areas, one shows how we, how we're budgeting for the benefits, and you can see pension is its own separate line item, the other shows what, what debt and the Capital Reserve Fund have been over the past, or are projected to be, and you can see, if you want to just focus in on 2017, 18, the debt and the Capital Project Fund transfer is about $9.9 million, just under 10, just about $10 million, and that is $400,000, the $700,000 is $400,000 from the Performance Contracts, and $300,000 are our budget reserve. You can see for next year, and for the years out, the debt goes down to 5.1 million, the Capital Project Fund transfer goes up to only 3.8 million, and if you put in the, if you go two items above there, it's not highlighted, but you see the equipment line, that's where the, the technology 800,000 is. So if you want to look at the comparison of the two lines, the $10 million from this year, $9,994,000, and the 8.9 million, $8,925,000, plus the 800,000, it's about $9,700,000, we're actually, we actually did reduce the, the debt just a tad, it's like a couple hundred thousand dollars, so we, we did take a little bit out of there. You can see down the road, we have not made any assumptions, but in 21, 22, and 22, 23, there is an opportunity to do something as the debt continues to come down in those years, although I will say, by then, you probably will be doing something, and I'm not saying it's a new building, I'm saying you'll be doing something, I mean, it's, even, even if it's, even if it's what will look like nothing, which is what a total renovation looks like when you don't add classrooms, when you just go in and really fix all the infrastructure, which costs a lot of money, people say, what did you spend your money on? All you got was a, a building that'll last you another 25 or 30 years, well, that's what you did, so. So now, we're, we'll get into what is actually, we tried to make this look, so the, the top line up there kind of brings that debt and capital transfer line in, so you can see where, where the, what the money is going for. And these are the projects we have, and we went over these with the Facilities Committee in, in April, and, and in March, and in February, well, or whenever we've met, so, these are the, these are by building the projects that we have scheduled for next year. We have parking lot repair at Charlestown, auditorium lighting, this isn't the upgrading that everybody's been wanting us to do at General Wayne, this is just the auditorium lighting for audience, and it's, it's, it's a...
Safety, this is a safety issue with the lighting in the auditorium, so this has nothing to do with upgrades for stages or productions or anything.
It's not the Kennedy Center lighting, or, or whatever that someone wants. Now, there's also the fire panel, which we had in there originally, this, the two yellow items have been changed since the Facilities Committee, because tonight on the agenda, a little later, is the fire panel, and you'll see, I think it's 130-something thousand dollars.
Can you define what fire panel is really quickly?
Can I define what fire panel is? Sure, Jim can.
Yes, it's your fire alarm.
So it's a big fire alarm system, it is, it's our tech.
For the, for the building, it's the fire alarm system for the building, it's kind of like the computer, it's, it's kind of like an electrical panel, only it's for the fire systems.
Yeah, and it, it's requiring rewiring through the building, which is why it drove the cost up. We also have another one of them, we'll talk about down the road, so, the...
The, the reason it was so different from the original is that we had originally hoped to replace the panels and not rewire the buildings, and then we found out that we could not replace the panels without rewiring the buildings, which is what jacked the price up so extensively.
Really dumb question, because I think I know the answer, but just because it's at one school, doesn't mean that we have the problem at all the schools?
Correct, and there'll be a, there'll be a slide later, I can forward it, where the, with the facility, how the Facilities Committee is looking at some of this, because some of these expenses, we've been deferring... Because some of these expenses, we've been deferring, and some we've been able to defer, and we're getting to the point where some of the deferred expenses are coming back at us. So even though this is what we're planning on budgeting, for example, this year, we had right around a half a million dollars so far in unplanned expenses for things that we thought that we could defer, but we can no longer defer. So even though this budget is sitting at 3.923 million, please understand that the odds of having an unanticipated expense are there. And it's not $5,000 or $10,000. So I just want to make sure, as we look at the amount that's left in the budgetary reserves as you go out in the capital budget, and we start talking about under $2.5 million, I think we need to start thinking about how concerned we are about that in case we do have a major issue that is very expensive along with other things. We want to make sure we have money to fix our buildings. And I just think, I can't understate that enough. I, I can't overstate that enough, the fact that we are getting into the place where we've deferred things out long enough that things are starting to fail. And not because we, I'm, I don't want to say that we've made it unsafe, because we haven't made it unsafe, and we certainly are repairing them as things are failing, but we were able to do a lot of maintenance deferral in prior years that is now coming home to roost and it's time to fix it.
What are their lifetime expectancies?
We are past some of our lifetime expectancies. And-
So. And then at Markley, we, the, the big major thing there is to replace our, our dual burner, gas and oil burner there. It's not like your home burner, which is probably $5,000 range, this is a really big burner.
Can I, can I back up for one quick second? General Wayne, we're expecting many more students from the Atwater community. Is there anything structural that, that would be in the budget at all that we need to be aware of reconfiguring or changing, or we got that or recovered?
General Wayne will still be 100 kids less than what they were at their, when, you know, not too long ago.
Okay. So there's nothing we need to do physically that would fall under this? I just want to make sure.
I mean, we may have to, to, to move furniture around depending on that, but it's not, nothing. At this point, our buildings are, are, are okay, barring another, you know, onslaught. So.
A welcome onslaught.
A welcome onslaught.
Welcome. Very welcome.
Like when they let you get your land in Oklahoma. The middle school, and you'll see at, at the high school, we have a washer and dryer. Now, these are not just like the washer and dryer at your house. These are probably running right now. They, they clean our rags, they clean our mops, they clean our, basically, anything that we are dealing with there. We got them with the building, they replaced them. So they, the, the high schools are bigger, because they do the, the rags and mops and whatever else for, for the entire district. So every morning, our courier, one of those things does, he, he picks up and drops them off, drops off the clean stuff at, at every-
And we've been deferring this for a while. We are just now at the place where there are no more parts. It's just time.
And so this is a replacement, not a fixing?
This is not a fixing, this is a replacement. We have reached the end of the fixing and are now, we have to replace this. We've been fixing it for a while.
Yeah, for a while. So, and we did look into, there, there are services that you can get this done, and you would essentially pay about half of this amount, maybe more, every year, you know, instead of this, and then 10 years later, this. So the middle school, they just have such a large quantity, too. It was better to have them have their own machines so they could do, than the high school.
And how long do we expect the machines to last? Like five to 10 years, 10 years?
These are 12, 15 years, 12.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Not that we don't love Sugar Town, but we have nothing major at Sugar Town for next year. We do love Sugar Town. It's the sweetest school on earth. But, but. Sorry, I was just in Hershey last week.
We don't get paid enough for this. We don't get paid at all.
So the high school, we, you awarded the contract for the roofing, that was $3.2 million. That is the bulk of next year's spending. It's already in the works, they're already working on that, they've had some pre-meetings already. We're getting ready to mobilize, bring trailers in.
I just want to remind you all, that's only half the roof. We already did part, this is the remainder.
Yeah. The water main's another one, that the number was 250, but now it's 300. We're hoping it don't go higher, but it may, as we get better numbers from our, our consultants.
Can I step back for a sec? Life expectancy of a roof, like 30 years, 20?
Yeah, this'll be a 25 to 30 year.
Okay, just trying to mentally plan out. Okay.
The, the water main is not something that we can put off any longer. The water main, we'll have our fingers and toes crossed that it makes it to the last day of school. The water main is not pushable, because then we have to figure out how to get temporary water to the high school. So this is not something that is deferrable.
So if the high schoolers want classes to be finished early, they should not jump on the water main?
I don't believe they can jump on the water main. The water main is pretty secured.
Every day, the buses jump on the water main, because it's up the back driveway. And it cannot go down the back driveway, we talked about this in Facilities. To go down the back driveway, the way it goes right now, we have to actually take it out and through the softball field.
There's a whole thing happening.
Because to go the way it currently does would require a, a higher level of cost, because we'd have to rebuild our bridge, which, which gets into things with that exceptional value stream and things down there, which would add hundreds of thousands of dollars to this project. So we're coming down the driveway, making a turn, and going out to Phoenixville Pike through the softball field.
So the plan is for this to be done over summer? Get it done?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And then district-wide, you'll see things in there. We are continually repair, replacing our security cameras. These are not new ones, we're, we're replacing the final, some of the final analog cameras with digital. We have a lot of digital cameras, but we have a lot, still a lot of analog cameras, too. So, and it does always seem like every time we need to check one, it's on an analog camera, which, which gets you like the moon landing shots, rather than the crisp, clear, gotcha shot. We do, we are maintaining the other, the burners and some other HVAC things. Equipment replacement, I will add that in year, I don't think I put it there, in year, the next year out, we were scheduled to get our, our delivery vehicle, that's gonna have to get escalated to now. The vehicle's beyond repair, it's a, it was a $65,000 line item, which is going through Co-Stor's, the state bid. Ken and Jim have got that down to 50-something, so you're gonna see that coming on, too. We, we've been duct taping and doing as much as we can with that thing. It's, it's a, and you're gonna see, you'll see equipment replacement on. Now, that equipment replacement is not a vehicle, that's, that's equipment, like floor scrubbers and things like that, that are, are not cheap either. Some of them cost as much as a small car to maintain. And then our, our roof and parking lot maintenance, that's, that's ongoing, you're gonna see that kind of repetitive pretty much every year, too. So that's next year, $3,923,400, give or take, a sinkhole or two. So now, from the second year out, and you can see, we're still, made that little arrow go over the next things. Thanks, Jen. Here, just tried to give you the total budget and kind of a major item that's in there. So at Charlestown, we have to re-roof the old building, I'll call it the old building. It's, originally, when, when I first started, it was a slate roof, then we went to a shingle roof, so it's going back to that, too. It's a, it's a large roof, it's got some, it's got some flat roof portions of it at the top, too. Goes over the entire gym and area, so it's, it's a big, it's a big job. That's, our roof consultant, which we have, that's what's on the list for that. General Wayne, there's some, and again, if you want to see these things, they're in there, I, I just didn't want to, we could do these line by line, but I'm trying to-
If you really want to do them line by line, you need to come to the Facilities meeting, because we do actually do them all line by line. And I will share with you that budget. So if you want to read it line by line, you absolutely can.
When's your next meeting again?
Our next meeting is Wednesday, I believe it's May 23rd. If I'm off on the date, it's that Wednesday for sure.
So Markley has a fire panel, I told you there was another fire panel in here someplace, here it is, for 1920. Sugar Town also has some roofing to be done, and a few other things. So now, this is a, and, you know, we, we talked about the concrete at the middle school, we have targeted that, we are fixing what, what we, what, what is, what is bad over there, but we've got a really, this is a total concrete job, this is a tear up every piece of concrete almost surrounding that middle school and the stadium and replacing it. This is not just your sidewalk in your, front of your house.
This is, this is a huge safety issue, too.
Well, I, we've got it, we've-
Under control, but-
It's under control. We're, we're, we're working on the couple areas, they will be fixed. They are, they are being fixed, they've been fixed. We keep, we're hopefully finding somebody that can fix them right. But this has got to be done, because what it, what it looks like now are, are a mismatch of Legos put together. You build a Lego house and you didn't have all the same colors. So, and we've tried different, in a sundried ways, but, but a couple repair jobs that, that Jim's crew, they're, they're working on right now, should get us into this. This is gonna be a major bid item that will have, we're gonna bid this project out, it'll be, it'll be a big job.
And it's, it's all the concrete at the high, at the middle school? So when, one of the things that we're talking about in Facilities is whether or not we bring in an architect to talk about what the front of the building looks like. We have a lot of those pillars, and do we want to put them back in the expense and all that kind of stuff, without destroying the, the structure of the front of the building? So there's a lot that goes into that. This will be heavily discussed in Facilities next year.
Question about the concrete. So we're talking about taking up all the concrete? Okay, well, I, I think maybe if that's the case, we, we should look at using a different aggregate instead of concrete, because concrete, especially on the high school and the middle school campus, where we have sinkholes, we're all familiar with them. Well, that's due to an unstable subbase. So I would think that if we are to the point where we're doing, we're gonna take up all the concrete, knowing that it will always look like a patchwork quilt, because that's just the way it is. Whenever you cut it out and you replace it, it never matches, the color never matches. So maybe we should take this opportunity to look at using another aggregate instead of repouring concrete. Chuck, do we have like a consultant that you guys might be able to talk to about that?
We're, we're, we're working on that.
Yeah, they're working on, there's other considerations with the concrete, there's a whole heating sys, there's, there's a lot of pieces of this and a lot of moving parts. That's why-
Yeah, we have a heating system in the front of the middle school, which actually saves us a ton of money in snow removal season. It melts, it's, it melts the snow. Because there's no place to take that snow, it was a kind of a design fault, but not a fault, they, we told them that ahead of time, but it's still just the way it-
Again, using another aggregate other than concrete is not going to disable us from being able to do what we do there. It is the 21st century, so-
We'll take a look at the whole thing when we get there, because it, there's a whole lot of pieces to that. And again, we'll be discussing that in Facilities next year, so if you're really interested, I encourage you to show.
I, I will tell you that Jim and Ken are already working on this, because this is a year-long project, because this will have to be bid and awarded before this time next year, so you can start it. And, you know, we may have to start this before school's over to get it done for the fall. The high school has a big HVAC replacement. Is that the interior HVAC, Jim? The, there, in the interior rooms down in the education wing, we have some above the ceiling, in, in one of them, that, that need to be replaced. We, we continue to, to try and stay a little bit ahead of them. And district-wide, just some of the major items down there, we have essentially 25, 30-year-old freezers in the warehouse, which need to be replaced. We have a, a lot of masonry-type repairs, and I'll just use this building as an example. We, we're gonna have to deal with some of the stuff at this building and some of the other places where the masonry, masonry is, or it will create some, some bigger issues for the, for the school. Security cameras are in there, and I just kind of wrote, put listed them in, the equipment replacement in there, too. In, in 2021, we have auditorium HVAC at General Wayne, which is big. Roofing at Markley, Markley Roofing is, is due for that year, that's our, what our consultant says. I mean, it's a really lovely-looking building, but it's a, it's a maintenance nightmare from, from our end. But, and then, at the high school, we've been, we've been repairing the tennis courts for about as long as we can do, we're hoping to get two more years out of them. There's gonna have to be some decisions made on, on tennis court repairs, again, same, it's like the concrete. And the, the committee has actually talked about, we have 12 tennis courts, and they did a survey, we did, we, Kenny did a survey, and most schools have anywhere from six to nine. So it may be that to reduce this project some down a little bit, you, you may say, okay, we're gonna go to a different number, and one of the, one of the year, one of the-
We've taken a look at a lot of different things, and to see whether or not there's capacities, because we do apparently host a lot of the tournaments, because we have the most tennis courts. But we believe that there is other community capacity that can help us with some of that stuff. And then due to the configuration of some of the courts, there are some numbers that it, it makes sense to stay within, and I, I don't have them off the top of my head, but it's like, it doesn't make sense to do five, but it might be seven, it's the way that they're configured now and how many are existing. One of the things that we talked about in Facilities was having an, having an engineer look at it and see which ones will result, will, will do the best long-term, so that what we save is the, the best for our long-term costs and savings, so that if there's something with ground that's better in one place and another, or whatever else it is, this is clearly not my expertise, that we, we focus on those and perhaps eliminate some of the other ones. I'm not saying we're definitely doing anything right now, but these are the questions right now that we're exploring in Facilities, and when this actually has to hit the budget.
So Jen, isn't it true there that any moment we hit the front door, whatever we put together could be off based on something-
Yes.
-dying untimely?
Correct. I mean, obviously, that the tennis courts would get, the tennis courts are not something that can't be deferred, unlike, we do have some HVAC projects, especially at some of the schools that we are deferring, have been deferring with systems that are no longer, we are no longer able to purchase new coolant, and we now have to purchase at exorbitant prices refurbished, for want of a better word, coolant that they reprocess, that we can use again. And right now, we're all just hoping that they make it to the year, because they're not even in this budget, they're in the year after this budget. So there are things right now that we have, that we are hoping that will stay deferred to the point that they are, but obviously, heating and cooling a school is gonna come before tennis courts. I hate to put it in that way, but there's a give and take every year. And when you look at our Facilities budget, one of the things that we did this year was color-code the budget, so you can see the items that were removed from this budget to put in outlying years. And those are color-coded blue, so that you, so that we can see how much we moved out. Because one of the things that I've noticed in past years with, with our capital budget is that when we redo the budget, we don't necessarily see the things that were moved out of this year, that we decided to defer because we didn't have the resources necessarily to fix all of it, which was definitely something for this year, we had to stay within a certain amount. So, and there are a couple projects that are listed for this year, but we're hoping to defer, and we have our fingers crossed, and we're hoping that they make it to next year, because they are in next year's budget. So we're at that place now, where yes, there's going to be give and take every year for all kinds of things, because there just isn't the money to do everything all the time. So the things that have to be done to keep the schools operational, to keep the doors open, are the things that will happen first.
But what I am seeing glaringly, is that every bit of the money that we are saving on that debt, we are spending along with what we already had in there.
Correct. I am very worried about outlying years, and I'm not going to be apologetic for that, because prior boards set us up for this, that they put enough money into capital that we were able to take it this far. But we really need to start taking a long view on the capital reserve funding, because we are gonna hit points where our buildings are going to be of an age that we do have to do refurbishment, or that we are gonna hit certain thresholds where we might need to put an addition on a building or do other things. I'm not saying that we're there now, but we need to be starting to plan and look at those and consider what those costs are. Because in our routine maintenance, our budget is higher than our money coming in. So I just, I, I cannot overstate that enough. I don't know how else to, to say that we truly are in a place with capital that we have deferred, all that we can defer, and we are now deferring year to year with hoping that things- hoping that things make it to where we're putting them because they are past their end of use of life and we're now in the guessing game.
If it makes you feel better, I think you've said that every single meeting for the past two years. So, the message is getting through.
And, and I agree. And I just want to say, your committee, really, Samantha, you're, you sit on there, great, great work. It's a lot, I know. I sat there before the committee's turned over. Keep bringing it back and reporting it out as it changes because it's critical to our understanding and also to the public's understanding.
And one of the things that we're adding to the current facilities budget is our actual spend so that you can see what we budgeted and what we're actually spending. So I will make sure that everyone gets a copy of that. I think that that might have been recently updated, uploaded into Board Docs. But you can see then on the document, here's what we thought we would spend, here's what we're actually spending to date. Because unlike the general budget, facilities is kind of year-round. We put an artificial date of June 30th on it just so that we can measure what our budget year kind of looks like. But obviously, if something fails over the summer, we just keep, we keep going. Facilities is not, is, you know, there, there are not a whole lot of programming decisions you can make if the building has no heat or air conditioning. So there, you know, like we have to keep going. So what we're doing is we're looking at what was budgeted so that we can see at a glance what was deferred, what we thought we were going to spend, what we actually spent and what our emergency spending is. So you can see what our overages are because I think it's important for us to understand how much in unanticipated expenses that we are actually spending. Like, for example, we had a circuit breaker panel go at the high school. You don't think very much of it, but it's like $35,000 to replace that panel. So.
I don't mean to cut you off.
No, it's fine.
People should come to the facilities meeting just so we aren't here all night talking about every one item.
Yes, I'm very passionate about this.
I know. Which is the purpose of the facilities meeting. So Chuck, if you could pull us through the last couple of years real quick. I know, the further out we get, the grayer it. The further out you get, the grayer it is. It's not that we don't love Charlestown in 21, 22, but there's nothing there in that year. General Wayne, there's, there's the, the library RTU, which is the, right, okay. Couldn't think of it. At General Wayne in the middle, I mean, at General Wayne, General Wayne is the middle school. Katie Markley and the middle school. Only Amy and I will say General Wayne Middle School because she went there. And I just keep saying General Wayne Middle School. So Markley and, and the middle school have heat pumps that, that are in need of replacement. We've actually replaced some of the Markley heat pumps already.
Because we have no choice.
But as these buildings get older, and in 21, 22, we have to start a plan of replacing them because those, those units will be over 20 years old then. And these are things that are constantly running. You'll see in the middle school and also the high school, a track replacement and a track and turf replacement. The little track replacement at the middle school, that's that track in the back that we used for practice that we put in when, when we moved General Wayne Middle School to be Great Valley Middle School. So there would be ample opportunity for both track teams. The two track teams combined are our biggest athletic sport when you add the kids that participate in. But so when they're both practicing at the same time, it's like, it's like ants at a picnic. So we had to build another track when we did the middle school in 2000, too, so that there would be an alternative for them. And there's all sorts of ancillary track. There's some field events down there, too. So that track, and then our track, hard to believe, has not been replaced. It's been resurfaced, but not replaced. And, and that's up. And the turf field would be the, the field at the, in the football stadium, which, which, you know, that's a, that's a wag budget there because we really need to deal with some of the things that happened when we put the turf field in, when the township forced us to dig about 12 feet deeper than our engineers wanted us to. And we cracked into the, the sinkhole vein. You know, we've kind of got things patched up right now, but the, at, at some point in the future, when they replace that, whenever someone replaces this turf field, you really need to fix the, or get down there and, and take a real good look and fix that so that you're not spending money every year on it. And then district-wide, we have an item there. And again, it's another, another thing, but we have, the warehouse is, was, was a, is just a concrete block wall that is in need of some, some, some help. So it's, it's one of the major renovation items for, for that year. Then the final year, which is even further, I did not do the six to 10-year numbers because they're just, they're on the sheet for you if you want to look at them. They're just to keep you in mind. Charlestown's mechanical upgrade is the big, big item for, for that year. We have General Wayne, Jim, and some mechanical upgrades included in there. Heat pumps at Markley, continued middle school heat pumps. Our chiller cooling tower, you know, is also, at, at the middle school is going to be in need of replacement that year. And then lighting in the, for the high school. And so, now that being said, we, we did talk a little bit at finance last week. We talked at facilities. You know, we, we broached the idea of maybe even if you want to either validate or invalidate the, this projection is, is an op, we could look to hire a firm to do a, a consultant that does a, a facility study for you and kind of lays this stuff out for you. It'll probably affirm most of our stuff. City of Philadelphia did it a couple of years ago. I mean, they need it. I mean, they've got really nasty buildings, but, so we did talk about, we broached that subject at facilities.
It is not an inexpensive proposition.
Not inexpensive.
And it's something, at the time that we broached it at facilities, Chuck said at some point, we're going to have to do some major building work and we should probably do it at that time so that we roll all that in so we know what we're looking at when we're looking at the major building work. And that, I believe, if I remember correctly, the estimates are between $45,000 and $100,000 depending on how much we want them to do. This is a, how much we want them to do, maintain, what that we want them to look at. There's a, a lot of that. We just scratched the surface and mentioned that it was available, but like I said, it's not an insignificant cost.
So I guess unless they bring that back as a recommendation, we're, we don't have to talk about that, right?
Correct. And it's not on this year's budget anyway. So, all right. All right. Anything else on facility budget?
Everybody still have questions?
All right, moving on quickly. All right. Next thing up is a MOU negotiation update. Tonight, the board, the school board will be discussing a memorandum of understanding, MOU, between the board and the association. In the MOU, if a settlement is not reached by August 15th, both the board and the association are legally committing to go through a process called fact-finding. At that point in time, we'll ask the Pennsylvania Labor Relations Board to appoint a fact-finder. In a private hearing, which is required by law, the fact-finder will listen to facts and arguments from both sides. The fact-finder will then issue a report with non-binding recommendations. At that time, the school district, or the school board and the association must vote to accept or reject the report within 10 days of receiving it. If either side rejects it, it is made public and both sides must vote again. Again, I just want to remind everybody that the recommendations of the fact-finder are non-binding and both sides could agree to continue to negotiate or take other additional steps. The fact-finding process adds an outside perspective and it's sometimes helpful in moving forward a settlement, toward a settlement. It's commonly used by both districts and associations that have, find themselves stuck in negotiations. Just real quick, we're not saying we're stuck at this point. We're just saying that we've agreed that if nothing's reached by August 15th, we will pursue this option. We want to reiterate that we have tremendous respect and appreciation for our teachers and the extremely important job they do. As a board, we have the responsibilities, including balancing a budget that is limited in many ways by our tax base, by state allocations, by rising pension costs and healthcare costs. It is also limited by the fact that we have many areas which ha, we have to allocate funds to. Salaries are just one of them. We will continue to work hard to find a settlement that is fair to both our teachers and also workable by the district. So that's in here now for review. And the goal is next week we would be voting on approving it and putting it into the agreement. So any questions around that?
Dave, will it be up on the website tonight after the meeting for the public to read what you just read? Could we put that public statement up?
What I just read, yes.
Thank you.
Yes. There is a web-written version, so, that will be posted. So, all right. Any questions around this, this point? All right. We also have, next week, we have to, by state law, every May, we elect the treasurer of the board. I sent an email to everybody if you're interested to please let the secretary, board secretary know, if you're interested. So send an email to Chuck by Wednesday and he'll let us know who's interested. And again, next week, we'll vote on that.
Could I make a suggestion to you, Dave? I don't know if this works, but not knowing whether there's one person or two people, but is it, would it be appropriate if we could change that directive to, if you want to be considered, let Chuck know and write a paragraph or two as to why you'd like to be considered for the job, rather than we just all come into the meeting and, and we say, okay, that one wants to do it and this one wants to do it and we don't have much discussion or anything else and then we say yea or nay. This was a problem last year when we went to elect the treasurer that I'd like to avoid this year. So it would help me greatly if I had a paragraph or two from any applicant applying for any board position. That would help me make a decision.
I'll leave that up to comments. Whoops.
Does anyone have a problem with asking, with what I'm asking for, that if anybody's interested in the job, to give us two paragraphs as to why? Is that okay? Looks like no one has a problem.
Anybody object? All right, that's fine. Right. And again, if you could have that to Chuck in the next couple of days, we can get him out to us. Every year, we reappoint, or I shouldn't say that, we appoint our solicitor. The recommendation at this point is to reappoint our current solicitor for our solicitor next year.
Are you, are you guys happy with them as a law firm with regard to the service offering? And I, and I don't have a comparison here to see what their rates are. Is it going up? Are they keeping, keeping them the same as last year?
The, the rates are the same as last year.
Okay.
I'm, I'm pleased with what I deal with. I mean, I, I know we, we, I, I think we're pleased with policy. I, that's, that's, that's the big chunk this year. That, between policy and assessment appeals, that's the two big chunks that we're, we're paying this year. The rest of the stuff, we started using some of their special ed services, which seems to be a little better than the firm we were using. So.
Yes, I feel very satisfied with, with the level of service that we're receiving as well as the guidance and the processes that are, that are in place.
Do we use other firms for other services and are they also appointed in this way? Or how do they get selected if we use other firms?
Well, we, we appoint, you appointed Fox Rothschild to help with labor things. He's their one for that. We have Sweet Stevens, which are, they're doing some special education. They're just kind of running out the, the.
Current case.
What they currently have. And then, that's really it.
So how are the others appointed? Again, I, I'm new to the board. We know that. This is, this is, it seems like it's an appointment. When do the others, do they all happen at the same time every year or is it just when their contracts come up? So it's throughout the year?
The school code requires you, you appoint a solicitor of record. This would be the person.
So that's the record.
You know, when, when, when you say something like, talk to my attorney, this is who you need to give them.
And the others are more ad hoc? Is that?
The others are more.
Yeah, like last fall when we started considering what to do for negotiations, we actually had a motion to approve Fox Rothschild as our labor attorney. I mean, and just to add to Chuck and Regina's comments, I mean, from a board point of view, I think every time we've had a question, they've been very responsive, getting back to me and I think.
Yeah.
And these rates have been the same since 15, 16.
Yeah.
Can I ask a different question?
And we changed them. I mean, we, about five years ago, we switched over to them and everything's been pretty good.
When we, when we switched over to them, they had talked about community meetings, so to speak, where they would have educational forums for their districts who use them. Have we been taking advantage of that? Because we haven't talked about that. And, you know, I was kind of curious since this is coming up now.
Yes. Actually, Dr. Wexler attends and also Dr. Gafredo. So it is wonderful. Monthly, they offer sessions as well as, they've been incredibly supportive of us for our internal meetings and providing expert advice, guidance, and are always willing to come out and be a part of it.
I remember that being one of their big selling points is that we said that they had so much ongoing external education for member districts that that was huge. I just was wondering if we took advantage of that, if we liked it.
So for the benefit of the board, what would happen is if the board wasn't interested in accepting the recommendation from the admin to continue to retain Larry Dodds and his firm, then what we would do is we would instruct the administrators to go out for bid. So they would solicit proposals from other law firms and then we would take a look at those proposals and make a decision. So we don't really, it's the, it's been our policy since I've been sitting here where we don't do that unless the administration or the board says we want to just dump what we have.
And again, we did that about, I think it was five years ago, six years ago. So, all right. And I'll let Chuck explain the rest of these because he's probably got a better description.
And I'm the other thing. I think it's sometimes too, just nice to get a check of prices that we're not overpaying, you know, just, just when we put it out for bid. So I'm happy with their service, but very open to opening it up in the future if need be.
Okay, every year, section 621 of the school code requires that you appoint depositories. Not suppositories, depositories. Primarily, you'll see a list there. Primarily, the, the, our main account is with Pennsylvania School District Liquid Asset Fund. They're, they're what I'll call our control account. They deal with most of our stuff. We also have the Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust. We use PA Invest. So they're, they're all kind of up in that higher realm. You have a, a, a set of banks there also that are available for investments and they also are trustees for some of our bonds. That's why you see US Bank, M&amp;T Bank, Mellon Bank, Wells Fargo, TD Bank. Okay. For some reason, our computer system tonight is, or I don't know if it's Board Docs or if it's, because they are. So I apologize. And then we have other banks available for, for investments and, and there's a list of them there. Mainline Federal, Malvern Federal, some of the local banks. Also, it's the time, school code 2431, you have to direct and give a list of all the accounts for your auditors. So they're, they are all listed there. So every account we have and every account number is, is there, you know, all the way down to the principal's accounts. So they are there. I was able to get right to it. Student accident, or student athletic and accident insurance, they're kind of combined. It's two separate insurance plans. One, we pay for the athletic insurance. That's the insurance for all of our competitive athletes from seventh through 12th grade, including band and cheerleading. It's, they, for some reason, they say that. It's the same.
How much is that roughly?
$6,745. Plus, we buy a catastrophic rider of $500. So if, if, if we would happen to have a catastrophic injury, it would help the, the parents. And essentially, this covers, it's a primary excess policy. So if you have insurance, it's got to go through your insurance first and then, then our insurance covers what your insurance doesn't cover. The, we also offer the, in, in the same quote, we all, and this is the same price as it was last year. We also have. We also have, uh, in the same, um, realm, they have the student accident insurance, not athletic insurance. Uh, we offer this to parents who may or may not have good insurance, because if you're not aware, um, if, if a student has an accident on the playground or in the hallway and it's an accident and it's not like negligence on somebody's part, um, there's no insurance to cover that. And we're covered by, uh, by what's called the Political Subdivision Toward Act, which kind of immunes us from kind of frivolous claims of things. And so we offer this to, to students, parents. It's twenty-four dollars for school time coverage and it's eighty-five dollars for 24-hour coverage. Um, and it's, it's a, that way, if somebody wants to yell at you because their kid broke their arm on the playground and they ended up paying for the ambulance ride, uh, because their insurance didn't cover, they should, they could have got this, we, we do offer this. We've offered this every year for, for many years and it's been this rate for, forever. I will tell you, we're going to probably have to resolicit this next year a little harder because that company, um, we don't, apparently don't sell enough student accident policies for them. We do, um, we do sometimes purchase some of the policies for students that are going on trips for us that are, uh, free and reduced or needy, uh, depending on, on that. You have, uh, two bids that were awarded by the, the Chester County Joint Purchasing Board. I am your official acting, uh, delegate to the joint purchasing board, as is every other business manager from their school. So our, our board is, is official and can award bids on your behalf. It is recommended that you ratify these bids, so that you have the custodial bid there, which, uh, you have a list of, of what we will, are proposing to spend on the custodial bid there and, uh, custodial and supply bid, most of it's, uh, supplies. And then you also have the, the paper bid, that's, that's a, a rather bigger bid for, for us. It's our copy paper and, and we do, uh, spend a lot on that, about twenty-seven thousand dollars, you'll see, just for white paper. We talked a little bit about the fire panel. We had three, we, we got three quotes for the replacement of the fire panel at General Wayne. Two of the three quotes were from, from bid protected vendors under, under cooperative purchasing consortiums. That's like the, uh, Co-Stars or, or, uh, KPN or US Communities, uh, they're qualified in, in the state to, uh, purchasing, uh, so you, you don't really have to bid, but you, we get quotes from them. We also got a quote, a non-protected vendor quote to compare the pricing for, for our best practice. And you can see in the, uh, the summary there, uh, supplied that, uh, Keystone, uh, had a hundred and thirty thousand. We've lowered the bid to a hundred and, or the, the budget to a hundred and fifty thousand though, because there are contingencies. You know, they could get into a wall and we could have to do something. Hopefully, it's, it's not, but, uh, generally, you, you have a contingency of, uh, amount in there. That's why we left the budget a little bit higher than what the bid is actually coming up at. Uh, okay. Hold on a second, I gotta reload. I gotta reload me. Dude Solutions is, is, uh, are our, our maintenance management systems. They, they deal with energy management, they deal with, uh, event management. So if you're, if you're an outside group, you're, you're able to register or sign up for one of our rooms outside. So this is, this is the part of the, the thing that does that. Uh, we also have some automation things in there, some preventative maintenance stuff in there.
Work orders.
Work orders, that's the preventative maintenance, work orders and stuff. So somebody needs ballast replaced, that's some light they, the head custodian puts it in and we take care of it. So that's seventeen thousand, three hundred dollars. That's a, an annual thing. Uh, professional, Kevin, go ahead.
The next item is a professional development partnership agreement and this partnership agreement is with Dr. Kevin Flanagan, who comes in and works with our kindergarten and first grade teachers with our reading program. So it's word study and phonics. Um, this agreement, as you'll see, is the training fees and this is for seventeen, eighteen, as well as eighteen, nineteen. So the, um, much of the funding comes from Title I and Title II to support this, uh, partnership, but it's written for two years and it, that allowed us to lock in our rates.
Regina?
Yes?
I wanted to ask, if it's for this year and next year, how come it didn't come up in the beginning of the year? Have we not engaged in services yet?
Yes, we have. We have had the, um, he's come out and worked with our teachers twice and we had his services, but we didn't have any invoices. So we've not been billed, uh, as of this point, but we will be. So this was the rate that we've locked in.
Wouldn't it be usual to have the invoice come? I mean, that, this is an invoice, this is a, this is a contract.
This is, this is the agreement, yes.
Wouldn't it be usual to have that come before we start?
Yes, it would.
Just so that we have, we're really locked in?
Yeah. Yes, it would.
All right.
And we did not have that ahead of time.
Yeah, in the future, I think it'd be helpful to see those ahead of time.
Absolutely. And you'll see that, um, and when that is, I will highlight that for you.
Yeah, I think there's a couple more too.
There've been a few instances, just of talking about professional development stuff and at least maybe the new board members can agree or disagree that it feels like we always say, we talked about that last year, we talked about that last year, that well, there'll be a time when we talk about that as a cohesive bucket and just understand it?
Well, some of them, what we're, what we're going to do is highlight them, even if, that's why we're taking the time tonight and we're going to continue to do that. Even if we've talked about it last year, for, for example, SMART training, we've had that for a number, you know, it's repeated, um, for a number of years. But understanding that although it's maybe the same company or the same group, and in some cases, the same trainer, it obviously is different each year because it's a progression of expectations and services. So to that point, that's exactly why we're going to call out things instead of just rolling them over as additional agreements. So in this case, we have not worked with Dr. Flanagan before, this is the first year. But last month, when we talked about SMART training, that was one that we had, um, with math, worked with a number of years.
Ken, I, I might be able to help you understand, I know what, what you're trying, you're struggling with. So generally, what, the way it works is, um, the, the superintendent comes to us with the budget and in part of the budget is an amount that we approve for professional development. We get to see these contracts as the administration is spending that money. So, um, hypothetical amount of money, say we say five hundred thousand dollars. As that money is being spent, those contracts come to us and then we vote on them at that, at that time. That's why in the last vote with that contract on the boot, um, the divide was that, well, the money was already approved and then the administration wanted to spend it on that boot and that contract was voted down. So that's how you kind of learn.
So I guess that's my question is, when does, when is that sum of money discussed? Cause, cause I'm not quite clear what our role as board members, it's in the?
Yeah, it's in this budget that you.
So what is our role as board members in reviewing these contracts? It's like, we?
Have to ratify the contract. So as part of the budget process, when the administrators are building the budget as it's rolling out slide by slide every meeting, is when we are looking at it. And we get to then weigh in on how they are wanting to spend those buckets of money. Um, it, and overall, usually what happens is if we say, well, the budget's too high, can you cut something out? We look at, well, you know, you can go to programs, you can cut out professional development, then it might come up as a dialogue as to, well, maybe we ought to look at not spending that line item. But generally, the administrators build the budget, we look at the budget line by line, decide if we need other information to, um, be able to understand each line in the budget. And if not, then we make a decision based on, are we going to accept the recommendation or not? And generally, it's been our practice, they spend it as, they want to spend it with us ratifying the contract. So when we get the contract is when we say, like what happened with the last vote, nah, we don't want the boat thing and that contract didn't pass. So generally, that's how we, we do it.
I think there's a point though, and I think to Samantha's point and to Amy's point. For example, when we write our Title I and Title II grants, our Title IV grant, which I'm going to be explaining when we get down to be part of the conversation, as we write the grant, we commit to certain things. For example, in Title I, we would commit to providing professional development in the area of reading support and that's why we receive the funds. So we write, that's what we're going to use that money for. And when the money comes in, we allocate what, and quite frankly, I have a great deal of confidence in our Department of Teaching and Learning, that they are going to make sure that the professional development meets the needs of our staff. So the, the issue would be, if we make, make a recommendation, we write it into a federal grant and if in fact, we bring it forward as, as the grant is being processed and the availability of the person who's, who's providing that training. So in this case, if you say, no, we don't, for whatever reason, believe Dr. Flanagan is a sound professional development provider, the implications of that are those trainings that have taken place. So that's why it, in every case, we can, we try to move up and at least have the agreement in place, even if we don't have the invoice in place. But it is a level of, um, of professional trust that what we're doing in the areas of professional development are aligned with the district vision and mission, which is what is the consistent practice. So in this case, the money actually comes from our federal programs earmarked specifically for professional development or instructional support for our students and in our, and our teachers.
And this is a helpful dialogue. I think in the short time I've been here, this has gotten us tripped up more than once. And so to the degree that we can have a sort of overarching strategic understanding of what we're trying to accomplish, the onesies and twosies will go much smoother when they come up.
Would it be possible to have that called out? If something is specifically related to, hey, we said we're doing this in a federal grant, I don't know if you could put a document in Board Docs right ahead of the document or you could say it when it's presented, just because that makes it much clearer, right?
Right, and that's in the explanation. If you look at the document, for example, the professional development agreement, it's in, it's part of their Title I and Title II funding. That's what that means.
I didn't catch that, I read it, I didn't catch that.
Yes. And, but if you don't understand, I mean, it's a, it's a, you know, if you don't have this schema to attach it to, that's what that means. And, um, it really, as our goal, it's aligned to our district goals, which are aligned to our comprehensive plan. And that's the whole mission, to keep everything strategic and moving forward. But I definitely understand the confusion. And when we can, we will not have them, the contract, exactly, exactly. There are certain times that the opportunity exists, it's the right thing to do for students and it's the right thing to do for our professional staff, and then I will make you aware of that when that happens. The next three items of approval are private school agreements and all three of these are for extended school year. Extended school year is, um, instruction that takes place over large breaks of time and su, certain students qualify for extended school year. It is not a value judgment, it is a data-based decision and the decision is based on the amount of regression after a long break that a student, um, demonstrates and the time it takes that student to recoup. So typical students after a summer break, after a long extended break, will, um, regress because they haven't practiced, but the time it takes them to recoup those skills is limited and defined. If it falls outside of that, then a student would be eligible for extended school year services and these three agreements provide that service aligned to a student's need. So, um, those are there with redacted, um, student information.
And these are mandated agreements, yes. You can't choose not to provide ESY.
The service is mandated? No, the service is mandated.
Yes, I mean, not the provider, but the.
The agreement is based upon what is most appropriate for the student.
But we can't choose not to do ESY.
Absolutely. And we offer our own ESY service programs with, in the summer, on campus as well.
Transworld, um, accounts receivable collections. Nicole Millia and I have been investigating a way to collect our, uh, our delinquent unpaid lunch accounts.
I'll write you a check, Chuck. I'm always getting notices.
So for those that get the, uh, the, uh, call from school messenger and pay, thank you. Uh, for those that don't, we need, we need to go a little bit further. We, we have about four thousand dollars outstanding right now and that's only about, about forty accounts. We also have a number of, uh, what I'll call, um, getting close to, to, uh, we're having trouble collecting in student activity area. So it would be a combination of both. At the end of the school year, we're going to have to write a check to the cafeteria fund for that four thousand dollars or whatever it is at the time, because that's what the new, uh, federal law regulations require, is the cafeteria fund cannot pay for those accounts. That's your responsibility. So we have to collect them. So this is, this is us. This company will go after and we will buy a, a pocket of, or a, a pack of, of collections. Uh, we're recommending two fifty, about thirty-three hundred dollars, uh, and they will go after, so we'll have a few years' worth of, of collections. We can add, uh, collection fees onto it. Uh, they collect, you know, it's, it's, if you've ever got a Dunning's letter, if you know what that, that is, it's a, an old collection agency they used to sell.
Well, none of us are going to admit to it, so you might as well explain it.
Well, if you've ever heard of your neighbor getting a Dunning's letter, uh, it's basically a nasty gram that looks like an attorney sent him that said, you know, pay now, please. And, uh, so we're, we're, we're recommending this, uh, because we've exhausted, I mean, we're, we've, we send out school messengers, we actually make personal phone calls, uh, and we have to ramp it up a little bit.
So I, oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to see the cost of the collections.
It's in the contract.
Okay. And, and if I could maybe say, in every scenario where we have the ability or the necessity, I guess I should say, to use, um, an independent collector, I would hope that all of the fees are always rolled in so that it is a zero, um, add for us?
Like we make more than we spend on it? Yeah.
My, I haven't, so I know, having used this in my professional life before, um, it's a set amount per account and I believe it's slightly over thirteen bucks in our contract.
Right.
So does that mean that, say, somebody owes five dollars? Do we have the right to add that thirteen onto the five or are we just not going after the ones who are under, I mean, like, did you set a threshold?
Yeah, they're, they're not, and I'll have to talk to Nicole about what our threshold number is. But, um, the first thing we would do if you agree to this is, is I will send out a final letter from my office that says, you gotta pay this twenty dollars or fifty-eight dollars or it's going to be seventy-one dollars or thirty-three dollars. Um, and we're turning it over to a collection agency and you'll be responsible. They will actually go even further, you know, if we choose and it doesn't cost us anything and we just get everything back. These people, the, the, the check actually comes right to us, so they do not collect, you know, we, we send them the money, then they're, they're, they're kind of out of it. They monitor how they collect. I mean, they have a fifty-six percent collection rate. I mean, I don't know if that's great or, but they're dealing with the worst of the worst accounts to collect, so, uh, you know, we use them in the past for things like this and, and other things, uh, to, with some, some limited success. Will it clear off everybody? I doubt it. I mean, I would really doubt it. But, uh, we have to make some, some conscious effort to, uh.
Do we intend, or can we? I know different industries can and cannot report to people's, um, credit reports. Is that something that, that we can do as a public school system? If they have a debt owed to us or no?
I don't think so.
I don't know this answer. No, no, but I mean, like, there's one, I, listen, it's just a, I'm not saying we want to, I'm asking if this is what, because I know that, um, I know that some industries will go to, even if they go to collections, it still won't necessarily be reported on someone's credit report. They are two very different things and then there's also reporting on somebody's credit report. So that's what, I just want to make sure that I'm fully understanding the direction that we are intending to head in with this.
I, I, we're talking like small dollars. If somebody doesn't pay their, their, you know, lunch bill all year long, how much could they possibly owe us at the end of the year?
Thousand dollars.
Right. So we're not talking about.
Or more, because, you know, you get the high school kids, it's, could be ten.
Right. So.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not advocating, I'm asking what direction the district is planning in. I'm not advocating.
Well, we are the district.
But anyway, timeout here. We're going, yeah, let's, uh, it's not going to be, yeah, we'll look into it, yeah.
I, I just don't think you know that answer.
That's fine. Um, we'll look into it, because we're not going to solve it. We'll look into it, because we're not going to solve it here, so, we'll get you that answer. You have the two proposed contracts for Cress and Insight in there, they are still being worked on by the attorneys, so these are not final, they're still in progress right now.
Our belief is that this is just a wordsmithing back and forth, so, it's, that's our hope, anyway. 8.18 is the agreement, this is what I had spoken about. This Be Part of the Conversation is part of our larger series, as well as To Down the Speaker Fee for Green Psych. If you remember, part of our wellness and mindfulness work, we're using Cara Bradley, we're also committed to mental health and well-being, that was part of our goal in moving forward, and we started the speaker series. The Be Part of the Conversation for this speaking event, part of that portion was taken out of Title IV, which is a federal program. Title IV was just added. It is not based on need, it's not based on your income level, or your aid ratio. So, that, the agreement that you see here is a one-time speaking event, and that was held on vaping. That was the vaping parent community forum. Next year, we'll have the full partnership, and you'll get that well in advance, it'll probably, the whole contract you'll see in August, for the entire school year. They have an agreement, they have a partnership that gives you a multitude, I believe it's three, speaking engagements, as well as onsite working with our students. We entered so late in the year, that it would not have been financially wise to enter into a multiple event agreement with them for this year. It made more sense to just do a one event, and then look at 1819 for the whole year.
I just want to reiterate, these are great events, but I imagine that we know the cost before we engage them, because the event's already passed. So I, just reiterating, I think it's important that we see these before the event.
Absolutely, and when that can happen, you will. This was a matter of, they came in, we had, we knew this was an issue at our high school and middle school, and we didn't have, we actually utilized our Title IV funds for that reason. So that's why it was a delayed. I completely agree, and when we can, we certainly will.
And, you know, just, so you understand a little bit more, is that if they have to wait till we do this, that means that this whole speaking would be postponed until...
I wouldn't want that to happen, of course.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's...
I know these were scheduled, though, a few weeks out, so I would, but I understand, I wouldn't want to, we only meet once a month, so I completely understand, you wouldn't want to miss an opportunity, I agree.
But we know how much we're going to pay before they actually speak. They're not just sending their contract after they come, right?
No, absolutely. But, it was truly a two-week amount of time. And, when I can, I will certainly get them ahead of time. When we're using federal funds, we are trying to maximize the benefit, and make it as far-reaching as we can. So vaping was one of those issues that we took them when they were available, because they're doing multiple counties, so, but certainly, we will try to be as proactive in getting the awareness out there. Frontline is the next, this is a renewal. Frontline Education is what we use for our Aesop system. The, it's our substitute reporting, and it actually is going to be used as we partner with the service providers with the contract agreements as well.
We currently use them with STS, too, and it's online substitutes and teacher absences, and other absences, aid absences.
I spoke about the speaker fee for Green Psych, that is the same thing we had talked about with Be Part of the Conversation, it was with Cara Bradley, speaking on Winning the Mental Game, and we've rolled that in with our mental health allowance.
I'm sorry, did we skip 8.17? If we could go back?
I talked about that.
We didn't skip it.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, monthly reports are there for review. Any other items?
I do just want to make one comment. There was an agreement on, to be, for your review, for next week's voting, that was for June, I believe it was 8-1-2 previously. It was removed due to a shoulder injury of the presenter. He emailed, as we were in executive session, to let us know that he is going to be scheduled for surgery that day, so he is unable to provide us with the administrative training. That was John Diorio, who works at the University of Pennsylvania. We will not be voting on that contract, because he is not available, so we will find a substitute opportunity for our administrators.
And then, I have a question, I guess, real quick. We've had a bunch of right-to-know requests, can you, or Chuck, walk through the process for answering right-to-knows?
Well, our right-to-know officer is also our board secretary and our business manager. So, the process for right-to-know requests, if you go on the website, you can, there's a form to fill out, and it is submitted to the right-to-know officer, which also happens to be Mr. Linderman. The law stipulates that the response, you will receive a response within five business days. The response is one of three responses. One, you'll receive the information that is requested, if it is available. Two, the request will be denied for illegally aligned reasons, such as that information doesn't exist, or that information is not subject to right-to-know law. The third response would be a 30-day extension, and that happens if the information is not readily available, or it has to be reviewed by an attorney, if there's an extenuating circumstance that would extend the length of time in order to prepare the document, or if the, there is, the right-to-know officer is inundated by right-to-know requests. We receive, depending on different times of the year, certainly around some different seasons of the year, we will receive right-to-know requests by national organizations, asking, for example, salaries, or addresses, or voting regions. When national events sometimes happen, groups will send right-to-know requests, and oftentimes that happens to every district. Thankfully, with our solicitor, they are also solicitors for multiple other districts, so they can guide us through that kind of response. But, our goal is to always be as responsive as possible, understanding that the law allows five business days, and oftentimes, that time is spent reviewing with an attorney. Sometimes requests are seemingly innocuous, and should be turned around rather quickly. I just am always cognizant of, there are multiple right-to-know requests, so what may only take an hour or two to create and get out in a right-to-know response, when you have a large volume of right-to-know requests, those multiple hours add up.
And just for the benefit of the right-to-know officer, right now, is one of the biggest rationale for going to a 30-day extension, which I will be invoking in most right-to-know requests received now, is staffing constraints, which, as you know, the right-to-know officer has two people, me and Linda. And that doesn't look like Linda over there. So, Linda's been out for over two months now, and, you know, it's not, you know, so it is. And, again, like, when we talked to our attorney, Justin, he says, you know, the right-to-know law was put in, and they didn't send money with you to help staff stuff. So the people that are doing it still have their regular jobs to do, it's not like it's a really busy season with the budget, and the teacher contract, and things like that for the right-to-know office, it's pretty much an off-season for us right now. But, given the same time, is, you know, Linda and I do this together, we are a team, I mean, granted, I end up doing the final responses, but, you know, we do get quite a few. This month, we've had an extraordinary amount, and as Regina said, because I keep her informed on all of them, I only let you guys know on some of them. A lot of them are national, a lot of them are pretty intense. We've invoked the 30 days on a few of them, which I'm still, then I'm running up against the 30-day thing, you know, so, sometimes 30 days kills you, because you're just putting everybody at 30 days, so all of a sudden, 30 days from now, you have 20 of them to do in a row, so...
And again, it's just an explanation of the legal requirements, not for purposes of excuses.
No, no, I just want to make sure everybody understood, so...
So then, that's our policy, and we're consistent with that, that is...
Well, it's not the policy, it's the law.
The law, right, but our, right, that's the law. So, we do give what we have, what we can, in times when we need extra time, the law allows us to take an additional 30 days, and that's what we do, and we've always done that, from what I know, right?
The one thing, if, if the right-to-know officer is invoking the 30 days, you will still receive a response within five business days, letting you know that it will be an additional 30 days. So it's not, no response means 30 days.
Yeah, and for example, when I do go on vacation, my auto reply from the right, from the board secretary account invokes the 30 days, so that people get an automatic response from me, they probably don't like it, but it's an automatic, because if I'm on vacation for a week, I would legally not be able to do it. So, with the help of Justin at Whistler, we crafted a auto-response on my, that I put in, when I'm going to be out for longer than it would be a five-day response time.
And, quick follow-up question, but the board obviously likes to know about staffing. Do you anticipate any problems with a 30-day extension of filling right-to-know requests, or do you feel like you'll be able to handle that without changes in staffing?
Oh, I, you know, we'll get it done.
Just because I know Linda from our personnel requests that are coming up for the voting meeting, it looks like she's going to be out towards the end of June. So this isn't a very temporary period of time that she's needed to be out for with her injury.
And what we've done to do, to assist with the day-to-day, we've reallocated some resources, and actually utilized some of our tech support.
Yeah, don't get me wrong, I stole Jim's secretary, because she's been around for a while now, she's retiring at the end of June, so, she always wanted to finish her career at the top, so now she is. No, just kidding, but, just kidding. But, but the problem is, that's a ripple-down effect, and she really doesn't know Linda's been there for, you know, for, she's been my secretary for 13 years, so she, you know, kind of knows what I'm thinking before I'm thinking, you know what I mean?
I don't want people thinking Linda's coming right back, either, that this is, she's not coming back for essentially another two months, so...
Well, it doesn't matter, at the end of the day, it's, the law says we have to have it out in 30 days, period. No excuses. And we do, so, all right. Any other items or comments from the board? All right, the draft agenda's there for review for next week. At this point, I'll open up the podium for public comment. If you have a comment, please come to the podium over here, state your name and residency. Please try to limit your time to three minutes or less, in consideration of others who might want to speak. So, if anybody would like to speak?
Lisa Gray, East Whiteland Township. In the world today, young teens are bombarded by social media, video game trends, and a society that lacks respect for each other. There are approximately one in three adolescents that meet criteria for an anxiety disorder by the age of 18, according to the Child Mind Institute. In our school system, adults can promote a positive self-concept and create a productive learning environment for kids. Teachers play a key role, and most are constantly striving to make personal connections with students, and guide them to a bright future. With that said, the Middle School's National Junior Honor Society is a club that has certain requirements. Demonstration of high academic standing grants a student the invitation to join. The application process involves teacher recommendations, the student's essay, and a list of activities and awards. Each candidate can be evaluated using multiple criteria. All three of my children have been invited to apply to the National Junior Honor Society at the middle school. Six years ago, my son was rejected due to not having enough volunteer hours. Three years ago, my daughter was inducted. This year, my son was not accepted due to a parental error. I filled out a section of the application. I compiled the hours of engagement in various activities and wrote them down. Although there is a rubric that includes the legibility of handwriting as a requirement, it does not mention handwriting, other than the students, or whether the writing is done in pen or not. The directions on the application do state that the form is to be filled out by the student in blue or black ink, but no clear consequences if it isn't. A few months ago, my son was pulled out of lunch and shown examples of his handwriting by one of the NJH teachers. Surprised by this situation, he was asked if the activities section was in his script. Honestly, he replied that his mother filled that portion out. For this reason, he was told he would not be in the National Junior Honor Society this year, and that this discussion would suffice. No letter would be sent, as is the usual protocol, and he could apply next year. When my son shared this experience, the manner in which he was interrogated made an impact on him. Despite my plea for reconsideration, and the request that all of the criteria be examined by, to the teacher, the principal, and the superintendent, my son is not going to be participating in the National Junior Honor Society. Although I have not received a copy of the bylaws that I had asked for, I was informed that this decision could not be reversed, as stated and such. The last thing that I requested was an apology for my son, for the manner in which he was treated, as of today, that has not occurred. In the middle school in which I'm employed, there was a unique situation regarding the National Junior Honor Society this year. A student of mine, that is twice exceptional, was applying for acceptance into the National Junior Honor Society, and was asking for me to complete a teacher recommendation form. As I was completing the form, I was puzzled as to whether to indicate yes or no, considering the student's capabilities. This student would certainly benefit from the experience, but would not be able to serve as a member, considering some of his disabilities. Although I checked off no, I wrote a brief statement indicating how I felt. Because of my application, this student was inducted into the National Junior Honor Society, but as an honorary member. Accommodations were made because of this student's special abilities. I'm here tonight because I'm disappointed in how this process was conducted in 2012 and in 2018, and I'm requesting a change, a change for the better. It brings the whole student, and turns situations into learning experiences with a positive influence. Adapt to how things have changed in the 21st century, and realize it's time to think outside of the box. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Hultobito, I live in Charlestown Township. I am a parent of a 10th grader at Great Valley High School, and a 6th grader at Great Valley Middle School. Both of my daughters went to Charlestown Elementary School, and still talk about what a wonderful place it was for them. Excuse me. I have a master's degree in education, and was a teacher in the Wallingford-Swathwaite School District, before my oldest daughter was born. Choosing a reputable school district was very important to my husband and I, when we bought our home here. I'm here tonight in support of the outstanding teachers in Great Valley. In my opinion, an outstanding teacher is one who understands that a child is multifaceted, and that their character development, interests outside of school, ability to transform conflict into peace, and communication skills are more important than how they perform on a standardized test. Teachers who know how to nurture the whole child, and believe in putting the curriculum aside when necessary, the ones who don't see teaching as a 9:4 or 7:3 job, but are passionate about making a difference in the life of their students, are the ones we want to recruit and retain to work in the Great Valley School District. Because I fear that I'm going to leave somebody out, I'm not going to mention specific teacher names, but I want to tell you just a few of the many positive experiences our family has had with Great Valley teachers. When my oldest daughter was in kindergarten, we adopted her younger sister from China. This was a really rough year, I didn't sleep for most of the school year. When I got to the spring conference for my older daughter, her kindergarten teacher said, I just want to talk to you about something, but your daughter has been, this is long resolved, do not worry, Mrs. Hultobito, but she was doing a lot of talking in class, and I was horrified to hear that my child had been misbehaving in class. And she said, don't worry, I took your daughter out in the hallway, and, again, I was horrified, and we had a little chat, and it never happened again. And I, tears in my eyes, I was like, why didn't you tell me? And she said, because I knew you weren't sleeping, and I knew that your daughter would That same daughter had a first-grade teacher who taught the whole class how to greet a friend, so that one little boy would stop kissing her every time they were in line. My youngest daughter had a first-grade teacher who I approached the end of September and said, I don't... said, I don't think that my daughter is mastering the sight words. Nobody seems to think she has a problem, everybody adores her, but I'm concerned about her reading. And this first grade teacher didn't wait till the November conference, but instead sent my youngest daughter home with a game of Swiss cheese to learn her sight words. The Charlestown Elementary Teachers welcomed discussions about adoption in the Chinese New Year every year because my daughter, their student, was adopted from China. Her third grade teacher came to her three-hour gymnastics meet and attended countless other field hockey, soccer, and basketball, basketball games for her students, showing that she cared about them and what was happening outside of the classroom. They still, that group of friends still talks about their third grade teacher as sixth graders. That was also the same teacher that taught my daughter how to fall in love with reading, that it wasn't just about decoding. My oldest daughter had a third grade teacher who recognized her academic ability and said that she needed to be assessed for future opportunities, assessments that proved to my daughter she was equally skilled in math as she wasn't reading. And now she's considering majoring in math in college, I want him to know. Both of my daughter's fourth grade teachers, four years apart, are the only teachers who took the time to call me, actually call me, one to tell me how well my daughter was doing and another to tell me about a conversation that was overheard involving my daughter and how as a mom she would want to know that if it was her daughter. There's an eighth grade social studies teacher who met my daughter, who helped her discover a love for U.S. history. After completing his class and middle school, she and I went to Chicago for a girls' weekend and of course we visited the Chicago History Museum. There were two curators who joined my daughter and I in a conversation about an exhibit. We talked with them at great length. They wanted to know what college she went to, due to how much she knew about history. That same daughter had a middle school math teacher who was waiting for her when she came.
I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up.
Okay. As you can, okay, thank you, sorry about that.
That's all right.
My point is that I heard that there was lots of negative feedback about the teachers in our school district. And so at the request of our outstanding teachers, I wanted to represent tonight that there are parents in our school district who recognize that we have outstanding teachers. Thank you for retaining them.
Thank you. Yeah, Steph just wanted to bring up another point. You're welcome to send the rest of that in email or any other comments you want to email us. If, if it's longer than three minutes, that's okay too. Or shorter than three minutes too, if that matters.
Okay, I'll do the best I can. I didn't know we had a time limit. I'm Karen Wilson. I've lived in Melbourne since 1990. My children attended the Great Valley School District from 2002 to 2015, so I'm now a very proud alumni mom. A lot of you knew our family, but I, again, wanted to talk about how special the Charlestown teachers were to us. I have kind of an unusual story and some of you know, I'm the mom of triplets Claire Laurel and Jeremy Wilson. And when they first went to Charlestown Elementary, we met Donna Grumwalt as we walked in the door and she got right down on their level and said, I've met and taught triplets before, but I'm a twin. And she looked up at me and said, don't worry, I know how to handle this, it's going to be fine. She's been, become a very special person to our family and has stood by us through a lot of, a lot of things. My daughter Laurel was diagnosed with ADD in third grade, was struggling, and Ed Jamison developed some teaching tools for her in the classroom that really she claims saved her life. And I'm going to just talk a little bit more about her later. As many of you also know, in 2007, my son Jeremy was diagnosed with a very rare form of, of cancer. He was only 10 years old. This was devastating to our family and we will be forever grateful to the teachers at Charlestown Elementary who just rallied and embraced our family and took so much time and caring for our daughters while our son was being treated. I spent a lot of time in the hospital with him during this terminal illness. Particularly, Dill Holman became Laurel's grandmother and Dave Cliffel kept his little ruffian, and that sarcastic Claire who's here with me, focused on being the exceptional student that she was becoming. Dave was also Jeremy's homebound tutor and even when Jeremy wasn't feeling like working on schoolwork, Dave was there just to chit chat with him around the dining room table. And even after Jeremy passed, Rick recognized, he claimed that Jeremy was his teacher and that he learned so much from him. Such an outstanding point of view coming from a teacher. Moving on to middle school, Jeremy missed a lot of fifth grade and was so determined to go to middle school, spent very limited, only about a month, attended classes very briefly. And as many of you know, he passed away in October of 2008. And the day, next day, Ed Souders had assembled, created this nurturing environment for all the, the kids who were grieving, brought over teachers from Charlestown to comfort the kids and, you know, I just, I think that was just such a special thing and so supportive of our family. The, the girls continued, they were very resilient, bounced back, got very involved in their studies and all the teachers at the middle school really, and the high school, just embraced them and helped them to move forward and really become successful students. And I won't mention names because I'm going to run out of time, I probably already have. But I just, I wanted to just tell you where these girls are now because this is such a tribute to Great Valley. Claire, they're both going to be seniors in college next year. Claire is a junior, well, is, goes to Allegheny College in Meadville, Pennsylvania. She's majoring in English with a double minor in Education and Theater. She has an outstanding GPA. She's been named to the dean's list every semester and she's a member of the English Honors Fraternity. And a week ago, she received, she was recognized as the most outstanding junior English major at Allegheny. So I, I just think that's a really great tribute to Great Valley. And she still has another year. And she wants to be a teacher and she'd love to come back here, so. And Laurel, I didn't go in too much into her, but my ADD kid whose second grade teacher threw up her hands and said, I don't know what to do with her, she's really a success story. She walked on the campus of Gettysburg College and said, this is where I want to go, got accepted early decision. And she is just really succeeding as, she's a history major with a, and a studio art double major, minoring in Civil War era studies because she's so interested in history. She's also a reenactor, she's been, she's in the History Honor Society, she's been on the dean's honor list every semester. And I won't, I hate to brag about grades, but her GPA is above a 3.8. So that, that's just, to me, I think that's such a tribute to the, the teachers at Great Valley because she never would have been successful without all of the support that she received. So, well done, Great Valley teachers. And I just, I know I'm over the time, but I just want to leave you with a quote from my son Jeremy, which he's, he said to his classmates about a week before he passed away. He said, "School is much more than books and learning, it's being with friends and especially interacting with the teachers." So these Great Valley teachers are amazing and I just hope that the contract talks go well. And I want Claire to come up here really quickly, come on, because she has something to say about Great Valley as well.
I'll be very brief. But I just wanted to say, as, especially as an English major at a college, that a ton of my fellow students, I've been absolutely shocked about how well Great Valley has prepared me, especially with my writing skills. And when fellow students ask me to, you know, look at my paper, because you're an English major, and I just am completely blown away about the difference between their writing skills and my writing skills. But even other friends of mine who are not English majors, but my sister as well, have had this preparation at Great Valley that really makes a difference in college and has helped me to succeed, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Leslie O'Donnell. My family moved to Melbourne five years ago and at the time, our daughters attended a private Catholic school since kindergarten, so moving them into the Great Valley School District was not even in our radar. We had no intentions of leaving, we were happy at our little Catholic school on the main line. However, two years after our move, that all changed when we met Chris Vogt, a teacher at Charlestown. In the beginning of our daughter's fourth grade year, she was struggling to connect math concepts and her overall confidence in her academic abilities was at an all-time low. My sister, who has three children who went through Great Valley, had suggested that I reach out to Chris and ask if he could work with our daughter. Even though he was already putting a full day in at work, he had his family of his own, he graciously accepted to work with our daughter each week. Chris started tutoring our daughter in October. It took probably a total of two sessions and for us to realize that we missed the boat big time with sending our kids to Charlestown. By the end of November, we were meeting with the principal at CT and various teachers the girls might have at Charlestown. My husband and I were blown away, we had so many conversations with teachers at Charlestown who clearly found it their calling and truly loved being educators. By December, we pulled our girls out of the only school they knew and put them in Charlestown because of Chris and because of the people we met on, on those many days. And it was hard, it was scary and, you know, to have three girls in a very confined environment for five years and then say, okay, you're going to go to public school, come back to you. But it was, it was an amazing experience and, anyway, let me move on, sorry. Our daughters needed to be in an environment where teachers encourage their students to be confident learners and become caring and respectful leaders. I could go on and on with examples of how each of their teachers we encountered went above and beyond, but we would be here for hours. I will end with this, the only regret I have is that we weren't able to give our girls the gift of Charlestown teachers sooner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Lynn Ottamos, Charlestown Township. I also went through the Great Valley School District. And a little side note from my mother, Carol Ottamos, she would like to mention to you how great the teachers are in the Great Valley School District, as what they've done for my brother and I. But in addition to the fact that Great Valley School District teachers, it's one of the better districts in the area, people move into this area for that reason. And don't forget that, she wanted to mention, we sold five houses in the development, two of the families moved out of state into Charlestown over TE because they wanted to go to Great Valley. So one of them was from Virginia and they're bringing four kids into Charlestown Elementary this coming year. And I forget what area the other family was from. But in addition, my son's got a learning disability, he's been in special education, he's done fantastic. He wouldn't be where he was in sixth grade if it weren't for all of the teachers at Charlestown, including the special education teachers. I'd like to thank them for that. There's been many stories from different teachers and stuff that has happened in their assistance, I can think of many, including some of the ones sitting back there now. And in addition to my daughter Lily, Mrs. Shaq running the running club at school was fantastic, it was a great influence on her, helped with her self-confidence. And Mrs. Grumwalt did several things for my daughter and I still haven't forgotten that, one of which was, she was very upset at a young age and it continued for the next few years, was a perfectionist to some level in wanting to do her work alone and didn't like distractions, they moved her at separate tables. Mrs. Shaq continued it following year for testing. That wasn't, she doesn't have any issues, she, she outgrew that by fourth grade, so we were in good shape, but they were very helpful with that. Mrs. Gilbert, Mrs. Akers have been fantastic, Mr. Pecow, all the teachers. Justin's in sixth grade, he's doing well now, you know, he's loving his teachers there as well. Thank you, and please consider that.
Thank you.
Stacy McSheen, I live in Melbourne Borough and my son is in the special education program over at Charlestown Elementary School. I would just like to say that, and actually to just kind of add on to what, I'm sorry, I forget your name, about her son Jeremy, that it's not just about, you know, the education because everybody that has come up here already, you know, has just told you how phenomenal the teachers are in Great Valley School District. But it's, it's more than that, just like her son so eloquently said at such a young age. And it, it's about the community that's fostered. My son was diagnosed with an extremely rare neurological disorder. He's non-verbal, he will never speak. He's accomplished so much this year, but it's the fact that his peers, his non-typical peers, have been encouraged to invite him and our family to birthday parties. We've never had that before, so if it wasn't for his aides and his special education teachers, it's very lonely. So, just, that's all I had to say, thanks.
Thank you.
Sally Campbell, Willstown Township. It is more than just an education, there is a big aspect, as I've always been about, the holistic aspect of the child within our district. My comments tonight are in no way a reflection on the great education my children have received here at Great Valley or the amazing job our teachers do every day. I can proudly share that this past weekend, my 2014 graduate from Great Valley graduated from Newman University with a bachelor's degree in biology and a minor in chemistry and Spanish with high honors assuma cum laude and will be attending medical school this fall. So to all the teachers in this district who ever taught my daughter, Jenna Lynn, I say thank you for the impact you have had on her academic career. Being a Christian parent, I knew there would be struggles along the way if my husband and I chose public school over private school. However, I also knew they would receive a better education here at Great Valley than the private school I would have sent them to at that time. In 2001, the kindergarten class size at the private school was going to be 35 for my daughter. I even at that time had to sit down with my pastor and explain why I chose Great Valley over his school. Those of you who know me, I'm sure you're not surprised by that fact. The one thing I never anticipated, thanks to social media and changes that have taken place in our society, is that any child in a public school system would feel like they could not stand proud for the political party they and their family have chosen, their conservative views, and their choice to support the office of the President of the United States. Just because one believes we're a land of law and order doesn't make you uncaring. Just because you respect law enforcement and all they represent doesn't make you a racist. Just because you believe in the truths of the Bible doesn't make you homophobic or have hatred for the transgender community. My daughter is an amazing young woman and a strong advocate for herself and others and anyone who knows her would say she has a heart of gold. She most recently shared with me a slogan she came up with, "You do you as long as you're not hurting yourself or anyone else." It is now her go-to phrase when she hears kids making off-the-cough remarks that most don't think are any big deal. But sometimes, as we all know, those remarks are a big deal to any given child on any given day. That one not-so-big-deal remark could be the breaking point for a child on that day. I know this may be difficult to hear, but this is the world in which we live today and our kids are struggling, and yes, even here at Great Valley. I leave you with Joshua 1:9. This is the verse my daughter chose as she confirmed as a young eighth grader and took on her faith of her own. Have I not commanded you, be strong and courageous, do not be afraid, for the Lord will be with you wherever you go, and he is with her every day. Just like all the other storms along the way, we will weather this one too. Thank you for listening and more importantly, not judging.
Thank you. All right, any other public comment? All right, seeing none, any other board comments? All right, the board met in executive session last Monday, May 7th, for some personnel and legal issues. We met beforehand for some personnel and legal issues and we will be going back to executive session for more personnel issues. Thank you very much for coming, have a good day. Thank you very much for coming, have a good evening.